All right. Next on our agenda is public comments. Public participation in the board meeting is limited to public comments. Due to restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, I'm so sorry. Board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, direct the individual to visit with staff about the issue, or ask the superintendent to investigate the matter further. Comments should be directed to the board and not the audience. Any written comments submitted in lieu of speaking at tonight's meeting will not be read during the meeting, but have been shared with trustees in advance of tonight's meeting. Since August, we've, or in August, we implemented new protocols for public engagement and decorum in the board room. These protocols are intended to provide additional layers of safety for meeting participants and visitors, and to ensure our community feels welcomed and safe at our board meetings. They are no way intended to infringe on anyone's First Amendment rights. The updated protocols are: Visitors may not bring signs into the boardroom. Applause, heckling, booing, and verbal disturbances of any kind will not be allowed or tolerated. Applause when invited by the board president, such as we did with our recognitions and presentations, will be allowed. Handouts for the board members must be submitted at the time of public comment signup. District staff will distribute any handouts to the board members at the time the speaker is called to the podium. Members of the public will not be allowed to approach or go behind the board dais at any time unless invited to do so by a board member or superintendent. Each speaker will receive an allotment of time to speak. The microphone will be turned off when an individual's allotted time runs out. Speakers must leave the podium to return to their seats or exit the boardroom after the allotted time. Attacks of a personal nature against board members, Carol ISD staff or students, will not be allowed or tolerated. We request speakers refrain from mentioning specific names of staff members during their comments. Instead, we ask you to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint regarding a specific staff member heard. Our request here is for you to state, for example, my child's teacher or the administrator rather than the specific staff member's name. Please know, community members may share specific names regardless of the nature of a complaint through the grievance process or through emailing the board via our school email addresses or using the Ask Superintendent feature on our website. In compliance with board policy, if a visitor disrupts a meeting by failing to comply with the board protocols, a verbal warning will be issued to stop the specific behavior or action. If the behavior or action continues, the individual will be asked to leave CISD property. If the individual does not leave CISD property after a verbal warning and request, it will become an issue handled by the South Lake Police Department. During the meeting, if a visitor has a safety concern, the individual is encouraged to report that concern to the school resource officer on duty. According to Board Policy BED Local, as the presiding officer, I have the authority to adjust the allotted time to each speaker. Tonight, each speaker will be given two minutes. If you feel that you're not able to make all the points you want in the allotted time, I encourage you to follow up with, to the board with your additional comments. Trustee Brian will be our timekeeper. I stated this at prior board meetings, but I believe it bears repeating tonight. Your board and Dr. Ledbetter are here to listen to each of you, whether it's criticism, praise, feedback, or concerns. However, disrupting the meeting or another speaker is simply not an effective way to make your point. Let's be respectful and considerate of all speakers tonight. And I understand that many of you are here tonight to speak on behalf of a teacher or staff member. I don't want to have to stop you mid-sentence, so again, please do not state the staff member's name. Finally, before I call the first speaker, as board president, I would like to make a few opening remarks. First and foremost, I know many people here tonight and those who are watching online have many emotions related to the events that have unfolded during the past couple of weeks. I understand there's confusion, anger, and perhaps fear. While we cannot rewind these past couple of weeks, we can provide some clarity on several misconceptions. Two weeks ago, our Board of Trustees heard a grievance. While the media has shared the grievance was about a book in the classroom, it was not. The grievance was regarding a personnel matter and not about a book in a classroom library. We also know that our teachers, with new legal requirements, have been subjected to a lot of confusion about what it all means and what is the best method for implementation of the law. As a district, we must all work together to figure out how best to apply the laws enacted by the legislature. Our message to our curriculum and instructional staff and teachers is that we support you and understand the challenges that lie ahead of you. We appreciate the challenge of understanding curricular needs, legal requirements, and implementation of all best practices. We will and must work together to move our district forward in doing what is best for all Dragons, both today and in the future. Recently, we embarked on a strategic planning process and invited our entire community to participate. Together, we are identifying areas that we can continue to excel and those that need improvement. Most importantly, this process presents a unique opportunity to come together and work together. We ask as a board that you give us the grace and space to do this important work. And finally, to our staff and teachers, please know that we stand behind you and we support you. You are the foundation of our district, and only with you can our district continue to be one of the best in our state and in our nation. With that, we will call our first speaker tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Have you folks noticed that NBC has never mentioned that South Lake has over 3,000 Hispanics and 5,000 Indian Asians? After all of these podcasts, the only time NBC references diversity is when NBC claims that South Lake, leaving out 33% of the city, is 2% black. NBC marginalized a third of this town. Mike Hicksonbaugh presents just twisted issues to make a buck with no solutions and cause problems here. He could care less about this community, proving it by completely ignoring the ethnic groups in this town. Hicksonbaugh and others that want to avoid our diversity were not at the Hispanic Festival. You won't see them at the Dewali Festival, but I bet they'll be at the Christmas tree lighting. Hicksonbaugh makes no money if we all sat down and had a discussion. Otherwise, he would talk about where he's from, Garrettsville, Ohio. If you Google Garrettsville, Ohio racial issues, you will be shocked and realize that South Lake is a great town. His own high school has no DNI plan, and their code of conduct is a sticky note compared to ours. Apparently, there's a secret recorded meeting coming out shortly on Wise Guy Talks where Mike Hicksonbaugh admits that he didn't do his homework on parts of his podcasts. Also, NBC, with Stephanie Williams, tries to villainize South Lake families in the local political action committee that, as I understand it, was formed to fight the C cap, but leaves out that DATS, which was endorsed and donated to Stephanie Williams, is a 501(c)(4) that was set up specifically to be able to make political donations and to the Stephanie Williams campaign to try to skirt around PAC rules. With the remaining time I have, I'd like to reiterate what I said at the special board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Our teachers are way underpaid and have no unified direction. If we increase our teachers' pay to the top third in the state instead of the bottom third, we'll have a much larger pool of teachers competing for positions, and we'll translate it to a broader diversity pool. While teachers should be held to high standards, they should also, they also built the school system and should be treated with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Johnson, and my husband and I have lived in South Lake for 37 years. Our two children attended the Carol schools, and now our grandchildren are attending our schools. I took this paper off our grandson's wall to bring to you tonight, and I'll read. "Alex, you have worked so hard this year, and that truly shows in your writing. You have found your voice. You are going to absolutely rock this test. Believe in yourself, and you can do anything. Your teachers love you and are so proud of you. Love, Mrs. Teacher of my grandson." This is the Mrs. Teacher we know, the kind, encouraging professional teacher of the year. Our grandson, Alex Hudak, was lucky enough to be Mrs. Teacher's student last year, and we're hopeful our granddaughters will someday have her. Like many others in this town, I immediately read that this book is anti-racist. I was not offended. More importantly, I trust our teachers to make solid decisions. I agree with the gentleman at the last school board meeting who said, "People come here for the schools, which equates to our teachers, yet teachers are already saying they do not feel supported, and that is not what we want." Looking at your recent campaign promises, I found this one from a board member who said during his campaign, "I believe our administration's support of our teachers is the single most important factor to keeping our district's exemplary status, and I want to know what happened to those promises. The prior school board had the good sense to hire Dr. Ledbetter as superintendent. Now I think we should let him do his job. Please withdraw your letter of reprimand from Mrs. Teacher of our grandson's file."
Thank you. Next speaker is Lindsay Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Garcia. Dear South Lake community and board, I've been an educator for 18 years and a proud South Lake teacher for eight years. I love my students, past and present. They are the reason that I continue to teach. I've always believed that teaching is a true calling, not just a job or a career. And as a teacher, we teach so much more than just academics, but how to get along with all kinds of people and what respect and kindness looks like. We also teach that there are two sides to every story, and that both sides deserve to be heard. Every day, I treat my students and their families with kindness and respect, and allow my students to speak their truth without fear. I only wish that same courtesy would be extended to all my fellow educators and me. On October 4th, the actions of the board confused me, caused me to lose faith, and feel unsupported. So I just ask that you please help restore my faith in this district and in this school board."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Lavender.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm a teacher, and I'm also a mom of five current or former Dragons. I want you to know, community, that I love your children. I only want the best for your children. Your children make me laugh. They teach me things I might otherwise not know. They remind me of the amazing potential that our world has, and they keep me young. Without your children, how else would I know who Peppa Pig is, or what a mochi is, or what it means to be sus? They make me want to be everything that they deserve. They're the reason that I work 60-plus hours a week. I miss events with my family, and I never stop trying to learn to be a better teacher. I do it because I want my classroom and my school to be a safe place for your precious children to learn and grow and have fun every single day. They deserve nothing less. Everything that we all do should be about what is best for kids. Your children deserve nothing less than that. Abraham Maslow said that in a hierarchy of needs, humans' needs for safety and love must be met before they're able to learn and to teach. At the board meeting on October 4th and since, some members of our school board and community have made teachers and other district employees feel the opposite of safe and loved. We're simply asking to be trusted, to be loved, and kept safe, so that we can continue to do what we love most, teaching your precious children. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melody Anderson.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Melody Anderson, and I have lived in South Lake for 15 years. I have taught for 12 years, and I have built relationships with many families. It is important to note that my faith and walk with Christ is the most important priority to me. I believe that God has called me into teaching, and so teaching is a great love for me. To say I love my job is just not enough to represent how I feel. Sorry. Watching my students' faces light up when they understand the concept brings me pure joy. Being able to pour into children and build them up each day is not just a reward for them, but what drives me. My job is to treat each child with dignity and respect, which I take seriously and choose to lead by example. It is not just my priority, but also a belief to keep children safe. For some time now, I have felt hurt as my belief in the system and school board to protect and stand up for teachers, as professionals, have been compromised. I wish you made me feel safe. However, after October 4th, I feel betrayed and unsupported by some school board members as well as some members of our community. Please help me rebuild my trust back in Carol ISD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jana Brannon.
Good evening. Dear South Lake community, I'm a teacher and a parent and a resident of South Lake. I have lived here in South Lake for 20 years. I love teaching your children, and I've always felt that it is my calling in life. Your children bring me joy. I work very hard to make my classroom a place that feels like home, a place where your children feel safe to learn and grow. Each child is loved and treated with dignity and respect. Recently, I have not felt the safety that I offer your children every day. After the board meeting on October 4th, I do not feel supported as a teacher and a professional by the decisions made by the school board. I ask for you to please help restore unity and to help rebuild trust in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeannie Hubert.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Hubert, and I'm a longtime South Lake resident. I am here to share my observations about the administrator. I have worked closely with her for over five years as a volunteer with AP Boosters. She has always been very professional, accessible, easy to work with, and is an exceptional bright light in the administration for our district. Through our work together for the district, I have gotten to know her personally. In my dealings with her, she has always been fair, thoughtful, and is an open-door policy if anyone has any concerns, complaints, or questions. She is a good listener, and through the years I have known her, if I ever had anything I questioned or had concerns about regarding my children, curriculum, or teachers, she was always available to talk about it. I do not believe she is racist or anti-Semitic, and to portray her as such does not fit with anything I have seen or observed. She is a good person, and in my observations, this serves this district tirelessly and advocating for all of us, students, parents, faculty, and administrators. I believe in common decency, kindness, grace, and compassion between all people, and I truly believe that this administrator does too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Jones.
Good evening. I find it interesting that the mayor blames the national media for the mess here in South Lake. The blame is right here in this room. It's the school board. Almost three years ago, the board listened to hundreds of students and families pour their heart out about the mistreatment they face daily in Carol schools. And yet, three years later, here you sit, and nothing has been done. The media is going to keep coming until you keep your promise. There is nothing more fierce than a mother protecting her children. And right now, the fierce mamas in this community have the ears and the eyes of the world. We are going to keep pushing, keep fighting, until you honor your promise. On another topic, I'm surprised that Cam and Hannah don't follow the recommendations of the Texas Association of School Board. It's recommended not to openly endorse a school board candidate. Do the rules not apply to you all? Yet you support someone who calls 500 Dragons evil, including my daughter, who just served the community well as bell president and as a four, a three-year, top-seven cross-country runner. Ask Ms. Page. Ask Coach Leonard. They would tell you, "My daughter's not evil." And you support a candidate that puts taxpayers before students. That's why the Texas Association of School Boards say you shouldn't endorse a candidate. Bottom line...
Our next speaker is Gerald Chalala Pua. I'm sorry. I know I pronounced that completely incorrectly, so I'm sorry. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. My name is Gerald. I'm an enrolled member of the PD Nation, which is located in South Carolina, and I'd like to acknowledge that this meeting is currently being taken place on unceded Kiowa, Caddo, and Comanche Land. I don't know really, I don't have many words to say on my own, but Holocaust comments really hurt, even though I don't have any direct connection to what happened over there. But I can have one thing in common, that my people dealt with genocide as well. And so, I'm going to read the groups and the numbers of people who were murdered. 6 million Jews, 5.7 million Soviet civilians, 2.8 to 3.3 million Soviet POWs, 1.8 to 3 million Poles, 300,000 to 600,000 Serbians, 270,000 disabled people, 130,000 to 500,000 Romani and Sinti people, 80,000 to 200,000 Freemasons, 20,000 to 25,000 Slovenes, 5,000 to 15,000 homosexuals, 3,500 Spanish Republicans, and 1,250 to 5,000 Jehovah's Witnesses. There are no two sides to genocide, and this sort of behavior really worries me. And I really ask that you search within yourselves to see if what's going on right now here in this district is okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Miller.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Tracy Miller. I've been a parent in CISD for 23 years. My four children have all gone through the district from kindergarten to graduation. In fact, we moved here specifically for Carol ISD, and we've never regretted it. Throughout this time, I've been very involved in many PTO boards, band, football, you name it, we've been there. And I've also served as president of the Carol AP Boosters since 2015. I've had the opportunity to work with wonderful faculty and administrators throughout this whole time. None of these individuals have cared more for the district than the administrator that's been under fire this week. We work closely through AP Boosters, and throughout this time, I have, I have seen her work tirelessly to best serve CISD students and teachers. Given the unrest and important issues facing our community, there's naturally a desire to find quick solutions. While I can't claim to know what these solutions are, I do know that letting the blame for these issues fall on well-meaning administrators who genuinely have nothing but the district's best interest is not it. As a district, we can't afford to lose these administrators and should extend them the grace if one mistake is made without making them the scapegoat for the issues facing the district. Based on my personal experiences with this administrator, I wholeheartedly support her. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gloria Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Paul. I've been in South Lake 23 years. I have four Dragons, three graduated, one senior. I'm up here in support of an administrator who, in my opinion, has been thrown under the bus. I worked with this person for five years, working with grants on AP Boosters. She is a person of high integrity. She embodies who a person working in this district should be. She is knowledgeable and will always make herself available to anyone who has questions or needs help navigating through their child's curriculum. I myself have asked her multiple questions. She always takes the time. She doesn't have any agendas. She, she is for you. If you go to ask her a question, she will stop everything. She is a person of high moral character and utmost professionalism, and I'm proud to call her a good friend.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Beauchamp.
Good evening. Thank you for creating space for input. My name is Karen Beecham. We have been a Dragon family since 2015. Rabbi Abraham Joshua Heschel wrote, "The opposite of good is not evil; the opposite of good is indifference. In a free society where terrible wrongs exist, some are guilty but all are responsible." As I consider the events of the past week, I notice we are quick to latch onto stories that make us feel better about ourselves and help us avoid discomfort that help us avoid responsibility. I know that a staff person is not our scapegoat, nor are concerned teachers or reporters. We don't get to use a scapegoat to avoid responsibility. We need to own the part we played and how we got here. When I reflect on the meeting at the Mark in 2018 and the hundreds of stories shared since, I'm saddened by the trauma neighbors have experienced in our community and the courage it took to share them in a public forum. What we know, we can't unknow. And so, we had a choice. We could lean in and do the messy, hard, humbling work. It seemed initially like a good-faith effort was being made, but when it got hard, when there was pushback and resistance, we became more concerned with reputation and being seen as a shining city on a hill than about listening, learning, and growing. And when our reputation got tarnished, we became the victims of our own folly while the real victims were silenced. Saying racism exists in our community does not make us irreparably racist; it makes us fallible humans. Saying we were wrong and we don't have all the answers does not make us weak; it shows humility, openness, and a willingness to learn. Reading stories and perspectives that contradict our lived experience is not a threat; it is an opportunity for growth. Some questions I've been asking: What culture have we created where a teacher felt the need to record a conversation and hide his or her identity? Has the, how has the discomfort of one parent over an optional reading book been allowed to impact a classroom teacher's library or another student's book choice?
You've run out of time, I'm sorry. Thank you. Please do email us the rest of your comments. Our next speaker is Hillary Hale.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've worked closely with the executive director of curriculum instruction for almost 12 years through my volunteer service in the school system and in the community, spending hours together in long meetings and at out-of-town conventions. I also worked with her, under her authority, as a CISD substitute teacher for many years. I know her to be kind and compassionate, a warm-hearted woman of character and integrity. I thought, I have thought highly of her for years, and I have seen her offer kindness and support to all the teachers and children under her care. In the current issue involving her and knowing her as well as I do, I feel that there must be more to the story or some sort of misunderstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Francis.
Good evening. I am here tonight in support of CISD teachers and administrators. I am here to particularly support the brave teachers and administrators who are doing their level best to make CISD a more welcoming and inclusive place for all of its students. It is wrong to fire administrators simply because they had the audacity to work on a plan to make the school district more inclusive. It is wrong to hire an administrator for her experience in diversity inclusion and then let her go when she puts that knowledge and skill set to use. And it is wrong to discipline a teacher simply because she had a book in her classroom to educate students about the diverse world around them. I do not represent CISD, but I am a lawyer. And unlike some of those from whom you are apparently taking legal advice, I am licensed to practice in Texas. In my opinion, none of these actions were required by HB 3979, nor did the bill require you terminating access to all online books for high school students through the Overdrive system. I remind you that your job as trustees is to represent all students and to protect and advocate for all teachers, including those so fearful of the consequences of your strained and frankly incorrect reading of HB 3979 that they feel compelled to alert others outside the district. They say that the best teachers show you where to look, but don't tell you what to see. I caution you that if you continue the path you have been following, not only will our students not have the resources to see the global community, they won't have the qualified, compassionate teachers to show them where to look to understand that community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Meredith Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am addressing you all tonight as a concerned parent who is watching an exemplary public school district become more and more divisive and less about what is best for the children in our ISD. Per the TEA website, the board of a school district serves the needs of the public school students in a community, keeping the district focused on the well-being of all children. The board and the superintendent work together as a team to bring about the best education possible. In your last board meeting, you voted to reprimand a beloved and respected teacher. Because of your actions and personal agendas, along with an inaccurate interpretation of the new Texas law, a chaotic narrative of misinformation between administration and teachers was demonstrated in the national news. In going against the administration's investigation, your lack of transparency demonstrates how compromised you appear to be in performing the duties you swore to uphold. The blame of the Carol ISD situation is on you, the board, not any amazing administrator, not a secret recording, not those teachers who felt compelled to share their stories with the media. The board's actions have contributed to a hostile work environment where teachers are in fear of retribution if they voice their concerns. Retribution from both board members to entitled parents on a witch hunt. Teachers and students have seemingly become collateral damage in an environment where the school board is catering to individuals, not the whole, and enabling harmful behavior that is not in the interest of our children. This board needs to do its job as the TEA has laid out, which is serving the needs of public school students and rectifying the wrongdoing of the teacher reprimanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Huff.
I don't know that I can speak after all that.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to say first that I stand with our Jewish community and our neighbors. They deserve an apology from our district. I also want to say that I support our teachers and our curriculum administrator who is under fire. Where we are today lies directly on our leadership's shoulders. The leadership that voted to reprimand the teacher, the leadership that sent out the email about the book fetching, the leadership that supports the TRO. Our teachers and staff are scared and feel unsupported. If the TRO had not limited us from the training, that statement most likely wouldn't have happened. If we want out of the news, we need to do better by our teachers and our students and our staff. Get rid of the TRO and get to work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Fiersen.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rebecca Frierson. I'm a mother of two dragons, and I'm here to speak in support of the fourth-grade teacher who was reprimanded by the board, as well as the administrator recorded in the staff meeting, both of whom have great reputations for their professionalism and the love of their children and our children in the district. Both of my daughters had this extraordinary teacher in fourth grade. My kids have said without a doubt, in their 11 years in Carol, this teacher is still considered their favorite because of her kindness and her ability to get kids excited about learning. Little side note, I'm a former teacher and teacher trainer, so I absolutely loved her. Just absolutely loved her, I had to throw that in there. I believe the combination of the ambiguous new state law with the school board's action to override the decision of the principal and the district administration to reprimand a beloved and award-winning teacher by permanently marking her state education record has caused chaos and fear within the community. Teachers feel any error could cost them their career. It is no surprise they are rounding up in a way that in the end caused a very well-respected district administrator to speak off the cuff in an unfortunate way during the teacher training. Her response shows the fear and confusion these teachers now feel. I humbly ask you to reconsider your decision to reprimand this teacher and take another vote. The board's decision will have a huge impact for the future of Carol ISD and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Pavel Kapanos. Is he, Mr. Miller, is he outside? In the hallway? Pavel Kapanos? If not, just, oh. Good evening.
School Board Trustees, Dr. Ledbetter, good evening. Two recent events have drawn national attention to CISD yet again. The reprimand for an anti-racist book and taking no action against a staff member who may have, very unfortunately, yet publicly suggested that books on the Holocaust may need to be balanced with opposing views. Dr. Ledbetter, in what may be the weakest-worded condemnation of the Holocaust ever, you acknowledged that it was a historical fact. Since this community seems to struggle with interpretation of history and its impact on the present, it would be helpful if you could also clarify the following. Is it a historical fact that this country was founded with, as Mitch McConnell recently put it, "its original sin, promising life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness to white people while subjugating blacks to slavery?" Is it a historical fact that in the early 1860s, the southern states seceded from the Union because of slavery, as their Articles of Secession clearly stated, and not because of some vaguely defined states' rights? Was the institution of slavery nothing less than terrible, quote-unquote? And if so, why are our children still discussing the pros and cons of slavery in CISD classrooms? This district's reputation has been severely damaged. If you'd like to salvage some of it, you need to launch significant reform or save what remains of your personal reputation by resigning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kim Franks.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kim Franks. I'm a former dragon, living here my whole life. My parents were educators here in the system for 34 years. I had a mother who was also a Carol grad. I'm deeply rooted and deeply passionate about this town. Dr. Ledbetter was actually my high school teacher, and he is probably one of the most influential teachers I've ever had. My name, I'm also the mother of Riley and Addison Franks, who both had a teacher who has recently been reprimanded by the school board. Our experience with this teacher has been nothing short of fantastic, and both children will attest that she has been the most influential in their lives. She would write letters to each and every one of her students before the STAR test to boost their confidence and self-esteem and help them relax a bit. Here's an example. I have two years, or not two years, that would be bad, right? I have two examples. Riley, have I told you how great you are? I'm so proud of how much you've grown this year, especially as a writer. I can't wait to see the creative ideas you use in your essay. I think you will rock this test. Just remember, be confident in yourself as a writer. You've got this, Riley. And she ends with a quote. Riley, I'm so proud of what you have accomplished this year. You have come so far, and that's because you always give 100%. You're going to do great on this test. Just relax and show them what you've got. Good luck. She helped pave the way for my daughter's education. I've never seen an educator start bawling at the end of a 504 meeting because we weren't getting what we needed for Addison, but she kept fighting alongside me, and now my daughter is thriving. This teacher views her students as her own, so much that at every fourth-grade clapout, she can't even say her goodbyes because she is ugly, ugly crying. She came to support my kids in their efforts to raise money for hurricane relief victims and traveled 45 minutes two ways to come after her own engagement party with her fiance just to contribute. She is selfless. She's passionate and committed to these children. I'm asking you today to please give consideration in revoting on this topic. This woman deserves more than this, and I'm afraid of losing her.
I'm sorry, you've run out of time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Yera. Yera. Lara, Lara, Lara. I'm sorry, I should know that because you've come before us before and I get confused with the two Ls.
It's okay, appreciate it. Good evening. We love our CSID teachers and we support you. The reason we have a high graduation rate and educational excellence is because of our teachers. But we also have these attributes because we have parents who are involved and advocate for their children. It's a partnership between teachers and parents, all working towards the best interest of the student. We aren't perfect. We make mistakes, and that's what's happened here. A mistake was made that violated the Texas Education Code 26.008. That states, "Any attempt, an attempt by any school district employee to encourage or coerce a child to withhold information from the child's parent is grounds for discipline." That is what's happened here. A good teacher made a mistake. This mistake doesn't make this teacher a bad teacher, and it certainly doesn't make this teacher a bad person. However, if we're going to hold our students accountable to the student code of conduct, if we're going to hold parents accountable to their students' behavior, then we must hold our teachers accountable to the Texas Code of Education. It's about accountability, even if we love the teacher. Accountability, a theme I heard in the strategic planning meetings from several people in this room. I have heard over and over again that students need a voice. Here's an example of a student having a voice and a parent advocating for them, and now they have been vilified by many in this room and community. Those participate, I don't understand it. What is it? Was it the wrong voice? Was it the wrong topic? Those participating and harassing this family should be ashamed of themselves. We are talking about children here, and some of this town's desire to destroy people they disagree with are the ones that are filled with hate. Your actions are callous, outrageous, and frankly disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Perret.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Christine Perret, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the true and genuine character of a beloved administrator. This person has done more good for our district than most people probably will ever know. I don't like speaking publicly, so this is very uncomfortable for me, but I'm doing it out of my moral obligation to support someone who gives endlessly and I know would stand up and support everyone in this room if she had the chance to. She makes time for every person and responds immediately. She truly supports the students and teachers. I volunteered with her on the AP Booster Board for going on seven years now, and I've always been impressed by her intelligence, her wisdom, her kindness, her calmness, and her ability to do her job exceedingly well. She even wrote a personal note to my daughter when she found out about her ACT scores. She's never met my daughter, but she went and found a note, addressed it, stamped it, and mailed it to my daughter, telling her how proud she was and how proud the district was. We've lived here for 15 years. I've had two kids go K through 12, and no one has ever done that or reached out in that way. This person goes above and beyond in every way, and our district truly needs her. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Dana Smith, and our family moved here in 2005. I'm the proud mother of three teenage dragons who all started kindergarten in this district. I'm here tonight to speak in support of one of our administrators. While I do not condone the use of the example that the administrator used in a recent training, I do believe in grace and forgiveness, particularly for someone who has served this district so well. I can tell you from years of experience of working with her through my volunteer activities and other interactions that those comments are not who she is. She is the backbone of this district, and we would be lost without her. Teachers describe her as the only one in this district that actually cares about everyone. As a parent, she takes emails or calls at any time from anyone, and she always follows through on a response and provides proper guidance. Without her leadership, this district would not have made it through the last 18 months during the pandemic. I wholeheartedly believe that. She truly has the best interest of every teacher and every student in this town at heart, despite the political mess that is going on here right now. I would also like to speak on behalf of the elementary teacher who was reprimanded by this board. She taught one of my daughters, and I know her to be a loving and kind teacher who goes above and beyond for all of her students. Our teachers are scared. Listen to what their actions are telling you. Talk to them, ask them. It's affecting our students. Talk to them and ask them. That is who we are serving. Our class of 2022, to which my older daughter is a member of, are worried about whether they are getting into college this year because we're in the national news. Please, I ask you to remember that the students and our teachers should be the priority. If we don't wake up, we're going to lose our biggest assets, our teachers and administrators. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ravan Krishna.
Good evening. Good evening. So this is what I have. A child voluntarily takes a book about anti-racism. The parent did not like the book about anti-racism because it was supposedly against her values. Social media comments by the parent suggested the problem was with the book. You cannot file a grievance about the book, so it was about something else. The administration found nothing wrong with the Teacher of the Year's performance. We find out later that the parent donated to the PAC and PAC trustees Hannah Smith and Cam Bryan. A PAC follower on social media says the problem started with the teacher's mom, a former CISD employee who is also against racism. The story keeps changing. Why is this not a political hit job? This week, we have another fiasco from House Bill 3979. The PAC and its trustees started this CRT boogeyman. The state legislature wanted to get some action too. When you try to address a boogeyman, you end up with poorly-written bills. When Rep. Gio presented this bill in a town hall, we expressed our concerns. The new PAC candidate, Mr. Agar, applauded the bill. The disaster caused by the bill and the PAC's ongoing political games creating fear is on the PAC and the manipulative politicians. We support our Jewish community. We support our Executive Director of Curriculum. Our teachers are the best. We support them all the way. We don't need any more hit jobs or witch hunts. The PAC destroyed our reputation. Let's get the PAC out of our schools. There is no place for the PAC's political agendas in our schools. By the way, I'm the treasurer for DADs. I need to sign the checks for donations. So, I don't know if this person has a problem with words or reading. I didn't sign any donations. I accept donations. If y'all want to give us money, please do. All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rob Forrest.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Ledbetter and members of the board. I have two relatively simple actions that I'd like you all to take this evening. So that, I should start by saying we've been residents of South Lake for fourteen years. We have two kids that are Carroll Dragons, and we're proud to be here, but the recent events have made us question living in South Lake, and that's, that's a shame. And I think many of your constituents are in the same boat now. The, the two things that, that bother me in particular are the anti-Semitic remarks that were made. Being a descendant of Holocaust victims is completely unacceptable. As, as great as the teacher is, or the administrators and the things that we've heard, there's no excuse for that. And Dr. Ledbetter, I sent you an email. I asked you to call me. You did not respond to that email. You did not return my call with, with my personal phone number on it. The, the, the issue that I have is that was not an apology. It was an apology for getting caught, which is ridiculous. The action that you should take immediately is a follow-up, well, to call me back, but in addition to that, to issue another statement condemning not just that we were caught or that it was brought to light, but there's a, a deeper problem, and you're going to work to resolve that deeper problem. The, the second issue that I'd like to bring up is, is the racism that was identified and no action was taken. And I have a very simple, in less than thirty seconds, action that I'd like to see the board take. You could very simply add to the code of conduct immediately, zero tolerance for racist acts. I don't know why that's not a part of this. I would, I would urge everyone to get on board with that and make a simple but effective statement for zero tolerance for racist acts. You can immediately amend the code of conduct, and I would urge you to do that as soon as this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ginger Forrest.
Good evening. Hi. So I don't have to tell you, that was, I'm the other half of that one, so we have two dragons. And I wanted to talk a minute about supporting our teachers, and I am a former classroom teacher and early literacy support staff in another state in San Diego, and I just wanted to talk for a minute about our high achieving, just, excuse me, sorry, our high achieving district that has many assets, but the most valuable asset without a doubt, as we've heard many times tonight, are our teachers. And I'm here to ask that the administration consider getting groups of teachers together by campus to ask them for input about the state of our district and truly listen to what they have to say. A current teacher in the district recently told me that this has never really been done. They talk to their principals, but they don't get to really have intimate discussions by campus with administration at this level. Teachers spend more time with our children than parents often do on a daily basis. They are teachers because they're genuine, they genuinely care about kids. Teachers want to do the right things for kids to make them independent, functioning members of our society. Teachers are the ones in the trenches with their boots on the ground. Why are we not listening to them? One teacher, a two-time state award-winning teacher who has taught in this district for over a decade, has shared some of her thoughts with me. She's a true asset to the district, and with her permission, I can say that she does not know if this place is for her anymore. It would be devastating to lose her. Sadly, I've heard some similar state sentiments from multiple other veteran teachers in our district. Parents have no idea how hard this year is for teachers. Kids are behind because of COVID, and teachers need to get them all caught up. The banning of books, inconsistent guidelines, angry parents, and a school board that they don't think supports them are all good reasons for any teacher to take a long, hard look at if this is the best place for them to be.
Sorry, you've run out of time. You can, please do email us if you, if you have additional comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Pratt.
Good evening.
I oppose House Bill thirty-nine seventy-nine and the position in which it's put our educators. I'm concerned about the environment that's been created by it and by some leaders in our district. It's moving our children's education into the past, not the future. The teacher who was reprimanded over the book, those teachers who recorded the training session, and the administrator are all victims of this toxic environment. The administrator was put in an impossible position by superiors and the law. It was an appalling example of the district's interpretation of the law. No one should suggest that there are two sides to the Holocaust, and I'm deeply saddened by the hurt that this must have caused Jewish members of our community. But the administrator is not a Holocaust denier. She made a mistake under duress. The focus should be on the law, not the administrator. I have known the administrator for seven years since I worked on trying to get Spanish into our elementary schools. She works tirelessly for our children. Her only agenda is the well-being of teachers and students and the academic excellence of our district. For this, she is loved by everyone, and I don't think we can say that for anybody else in this district. Our children need her. Do not allow her to become the scapegoat for this deplorable situation. Understand her true value. Know that she is irreplaceable. She's truly irreplaceable. In fact, a friend of mine who's not here tonight said, "I cannot imagine this district without her." I'm not sure any of us can. So support her, support our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Tongish.
Good evening. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Ledbetter. My name is Dawn Tongish. My husband and I have lived in the South Lake area for almost twenty years. We are the parents of three dragons. What a shock it was to switch on the national news and see a secretly taped conversation with one of our beloved administrators. Anyone who knows this beloved administrator knows the words she spoke surrounding a horrific event in our history are not a reflection of what's inside her head or heart. It's disturbing the depths to which some in our district have sunk to feed a new cycle. As a TV reporter, I spent twenty-five years on the beat, during which there were many instances we surreptitiously recorded someone. Most of the targets were criminals, pedophiles, murderers, con artists. I can tell you brilliant, hardworking, respected school administrator never made that list. I hope this board will insist on a full investigation of that secret recording to determine what really happened and if policies were violated. On the edited version of the taped conversation, you will hear this beloved administrator reassuring teachers, offering words of comfort. This administrator has always been a champion for the teachers. I've served with this beloved administrator more than a decade on the South Lake Carroll AP Booster Executive Board, where she clearly articulates the educational path of our district and works tirelessly to improve opportunities for our teachers and students. A few months ago, a comment about this beloved administrator was posted on the Pass page. There were glowing comments and hundreds of likes. That's the legacy of this administrator. She has touched thousands of lives, and she has my continued support and friendship. This ordeal again has divided our community. Let's not let it. Let's discuss the hurt feelings and work to remedy the classroom challenges without letting outside influences tear us apart. We are dragons. That means we find a way through difficult times. Let's roll up our sleeve and send a message that our goal is excellence.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Wagner.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Wagner, and I'm the mom of two dragons, having lived here for twenty-one years. The last eighteen months have been challenging for everyone, especially our teachers and administrators, who are doing their best to satisfy the needs and, in some cases, the demands of parents and lawmakers alike. I don't envy the position we put them in, and I applaud them for persevering in an environment that is many times less than appreciative or even gracious in some cases. As a CISD parent volunteer for fifteen years, I've worked alongside many top-notch teachers, principals, and senior administrators. This evening, I'd like to highlight an administrator for whom I have the utmost respect and admiration, who has been underfired this week. Over the years, I've served on several parent volunteer boards with her, but three in particular allowed me the opportunity to work closely with her. The two thousand and fourteen Strategic Planning Committee, the AP Booster Board, and the Carroll Medical Academy Booster Board. She genuinely cares about teachers and students alike, working tirelessly at all hours of the day and night to pursue the best outcomes for all involved. She listens to concerns to find alignment and resolution. She is one of CISD's greatest assets and has been a quiet and calm but powerful force behind many of the academic accolades our district has enjoyed during her tenure. We are all embroiled in a political mess right now, but one thing we can agree on? Carroll ISD is the crown jewel of our community, and our scores and ratings have soared even higher under her leadership. It's not just about scores and ratings, however. It's about taking care of and supporting those who are bearing the brunt of the ever-changing laws and parent demands. This administrator is one of the most respected in our district, and I can't imagine what the last eighteen months could have looked like without her wisdom, her dedication, and her selfless leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Cunningham.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Ledbetter, President Moore, members of the board. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Ashley Cunningham. I have three dragons, a sophomore, a seventh grader, and a fifth grader. All three started in kindergarten here in Carroll. I'm here to speak to the character of the fourth grade teacher at Johnson Elementary that recently received a reprimand. As a former teacher and child life specialist, I am keenly aware of the value a good teacher holds for children throughout their education. While I know that my husband and I ultimately carry the responsibility of teaching and shaping our children's character, I also realize the fact that our children spend many hours a day with each teacher, and these individuals help to shape our children, too. I am immensely grateful that all three of our children had the opportunity to have this teacher's influence. She cultivates a sense of belonging for every student in her class while setting boundaries and holding her students accountable. She's able to connect with and respect differences in each of her students and is a master at building upon their strengths. The emotional connection she is able to make with her students fosters their desire to learn in her classroom. She maintains an organized and upbeat environment, and to quote our fifth grader, "She always made the lessons fun." Most importantly, this fourth grade teacher models kindness and expects the same from all of her students. Coming back this year after such a hard year last year shows her passion, her teaching as well, it shows her passion for teaching as well as strength to push through hard times and humility to remember why she does this job for our children. For our family, these characteristics define an exemplary teacher, and I want to go on record stating that this fourth grade teacher is deserving of character praise and support from our district. I'm asking the board to reconsider the reprimand for this exemplary teacher. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jake Berman.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Jake Berman, and South Lake has been a part of my life since my parents moved here before I started kindergarten in nineteen ninety-four. My parents moved my brother and I here for this very school district at the time a three-A district that claimed to offer one of the best public secondary educations in the state. This was consistent with my experience for a time as I was able to learn from excellent teachers and administrators alike. It was one of those administrators, then the Dawson principal, that strongly urged my parents to pull me out of the district in eighth grade. I was subject to a rash of bullying, almost all of which was anti-Semitic in nature. I received everything from jokes about my nose to gas chambers, all while studying for my bar mitzvah from a Holocaust survivor as my primary tutor. Last week's occurrence was assuredly a misstep and a mistake, not due to her, any internal feeling from her. And Dr. Ledbetter's statement correctly stated that there are not two sides to the Holocaust, and I'm very thankful for Dr. Ledbetter using such clear language, as this elucidates the reality of the ridiculous and stupid law here in the state of Texas. Here are the facts, many of which in this country want to either whitewash or ignore. The facts are that there are not two sides to the Holocaust. The Nazis systematically killed millions of people. There are not two sides to slavery, white Europeans enslaved black Africans in this country until June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, a moment we're barely a hundred and fifty years removed from. There are not two sides to Jim Crow. There are not two sides to racism, and that same oppression continues today. These are facts. The other facts are that I, a Jewish kid born in Dallas, was bullied on a daily basis for my religion for almost two years in this very district, nearly driving me to suicide before thankfully being removed from the environment thanks to an administrator. I still struggle with the depression that started at Dawson Middle School in two thousand and three to this very day. The message you and the state are sending to your teachers opens the door for more of this type of behavior in your students. If you don't think that these same attacks are happening in your schools today with regard to someone's skin color, gender, or religion, you're sorely mistaken. You have the opportunity as a district to lead the state that's sorely in need of leadership in its education department, as shown by its thirty-eighth ranking nationally. There are eighty-four hundred students in the district whose minds need to be cultivated and developed, and hundreds of extremely capable teachers and administrators who desperately need to be supported. This is a crossroads for the state and for this district. One path is an opportunity to lead and be on the right side of history. The other will cost you and your children a quality education they very much deserve.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Ann Bush.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to the board members for serving our school district during this difficult time. So thank you for your service. I'm here tonight to speak of my experience with working with a special administrator here in the district. I have worked with her for twelve years while volunteering with our district's Academic Booster Club, SAGAT, South Lake Association for Gifted and Talented. For twelve years, I attended monthly board meetings with her, attended conferences, meals, meet and greets, and we've exchanged countless telephone calls and emails over the years. I've always found her to be a practical voice of reason, a positive advocate for all students, and a strong supporter of teachers. I believe she is a fair-minded and compassionate person. During the recent changes at CISD and all the uncertainty during the pandemic, she was the glue that held this ship together. I just couldn't miss this opportunity to express my gratitude for all she's done to benefit our schools, and I continue to support her and all the teachers in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McGuire.
Good evening. I am a CISD taxpayer, a mother of a dragon, and most recently labeled a domestic terrorist for being here tonight speaking to you. Last year, radicals wanted to implement a punishment system for students for undefined intentional or unintentional microaggressions. Now we have a teacher admitting wrongdoing for a clearly defined rule, and the answer from the admin over the past year was to sweep it under the rug. Are we the next Loudoun, Virginia? Will the cover-ups keep getting larger? What about the kids that supposedly came forward this past year with claims of wrongdoing where the student code of conduct wasn't enforced? Wait, aren't we supposed to stand up for the kids, not just this kid who was wronged by a teacher? I don't think anyone disagreed with the safety of our kids, other than those signing demand letters to defund our SRO program. Supporting our teachers is not synonymous with covering up their wrongdoings. Everyone makes mistakes, including good teachers. If this was handled properly by admin initially, it wouldn't have had to go to the board for resolution, and it probably would not have been more than an uncomfortable conversation. This is just exhausting. Please provide me a list of those offenses that admin will ignore and those offenses that we will enforce, a list of when you are going to protect our kids and a list of when you aren't going to protect them. We are all over the place. I would like to know exactly where that line is. Here we go again, where the rules in place are systematically ignored, and then we have a blowout and make the fake news over nonexistent book banning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley McCurry.
Good evening, board. My name is Ashley McCurry. I'm a thirty-year resident. I am a Carroll alum, and I have three dragons, ages twelve, ten, and eight. I am also a domestic terrorist who is disgusted by how this board naming two members have spun this entire narrative. I cannot believe that we have a trustee before a vote stood up and instilled fear into our teachers and our administrators over something that was nonexistent. And then you- And then you have teachers go to the national media and spin a issue, making it book censoring, when it was a disciplinary issue. In fact, Texas Education Code says, Section 26.008, "An attempt by any school district employee to encourage or coerce a child to withhold information from the child's parent is grounds for discipline." I think a letter in a teacher's file is well-deserved when they pin a child, three teachers to one, and tell the child, "You do not go home and tell your parents this." It's despicable and disgusting, and you should be censored. I cannot believe you can sit up here with a smug smile on both of your faces, invite the national media into our school district that is known for excellence, and the two of you continue to smile as you divide our community. Do you know our community has not had such division since the two of you have sat on this board? It's sick. So, you want to talk about divisive? You say that I'm divisive, you're divisive, and it is not welcome here, and we will continue to vote you out every single time. Your time is limited. Thank you.
Point of clarification, that was all a fabrication lie. Neither I nor Michelle Moore said anything that violated any of the...
Did I name your name?
You definitely made enough eye contact, so that was a lie.
We're not going to have applause. We're not going to have applause.
Why do you go one to the other, Michelle?
We're not going to have applause. We're going to keep decorum in this board room. The next speaker is Brussels, Maryland.
There you go. The plan for this new Strategic Plan Committee is intended to implement the highest and best hopes for the students in our district over the next five years and beyond. The people that are to be selected for this advisory committee tonight will be entrusted to do a very important job to find solutions to the impending challenges that we're facing here in the district. I was on one of those committees once, part of the now-maligned District Diversity Council. Sixty-three community volunteers who asked, who were you asked to step up in order to help and protect the kids in this district. Apparently, we need this for teachers now. Three years ago, this week as a matter of fact, that infamous N-word video came out, and we all agreed that something must be done to help our kids understand that it's not a good thing to call the kids the N-word. It's not a good thing to say the F slur, or terrorist, or slurs for Asian and Hispanic-American kids, or practice antisemitism. At least that's what I thought. But in a matter of a year, the DDC went from hopeful savior to out of favor. In what world does fighting racism, homophobia, xenophobia, and religious defamation in our schools take a backseat? To everything, South Lake world, that is. Hope it doesn't happen to this Strategic Planning Committee. Now imagine, two years from now, if people that had no interest in serving on this important committee were to appear out of thin air and say, "We weren't given our say." Imagine if people were labeling the good volunteers of this committee with derogatory names here in this public forum in order to devalue your work. Imagine accusing this committee of secretly trying to advance a political agenda or indoctrinate our kids. Well, that happened to the DDC. And my question is, what happened to putting the kids first? Pupils over politics? My prayer is that it doesn't happen to this Strategic Planning Committee.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Dorman.
Hi, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm Diane Dorman. I have had three dragons. Most of you all know my two. I've got an '07, a '08, 2018, and a class of 2020, kinder grad, soon-to-be class of 2034, which kind of kills me, to be perfectly honest. Somebody recently asked me, "How long have I been speaking to you all about bullying?" And I honestly didn't know the answer, so I sat down and was bored, couldn't sleep, went through a bunch of videos, found out 2016. I came in here first May 2016 to talk about my son's assault. That caused him, his assault in February 2016, his assault in April 2016, nine weeks later by the same bully, which caused his permanent spinal cord injury. Two weeks within that, another student in our school district was severely beaten and required facial reconstructive surgery. Nothing has changed. I've come in here and I've asked you again and again and again to change the freaking rules, and nothing's happened. I just sat down here and read and pulled up online assaults, which is what happened to my son. You all called it an accident. The administrators called it an accident. The word I've asked you to remove is "Students are prohibited from assaulting anyone on school property or at any school-related events." Disciplinary consequences may, no shall, no required, may result in a student, result if a student... No! It needs to be a must. We must have... Somebody mentioned zero tolerance. We need zero tolerance. I beg you all to do zero tolerance. And the thought of my granddaughter coming to this school and something happening to her is killing me. The reason she's moving here is because she was bullied in kindergarten, first two days of school, had a big knot on her head and then her arm. And I told my son, "No, you all get her out of that school district and bring her here." And then after I said that, I'm like, "What was I thinking?" Nothing has changed here. I am begging you all, once again, to remove the practice of deleting the disciplinary records at the end of each school year and changing the verbiage in our school policies from "may" to "must" and "shall" to stop it once and for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Duffy.
Hi. My family and I have lived in this community for nine and a half years. We moved here because Texas is a great place to raise a family, and South Lake is a wonderful community. I have had three of my five children go through fourth grade at Johnson Elementary School. We have had many amazing teachers, and one of our very favorites has been put in a negative spotlight. We are shocked and dumbfounded as this teacher is one my kids hoped and prayed they would get. She is kind and caring. She has high expectations for her students and is fair. She is everything we could ask for in a teacher and more. After our first wonderful experience with this teacher, my next child, to find out who his teacher was, jumped for joy to find out he got to have this amazing teacher. Our children grew so much academically and personally with this wonderful lady as their teacher. It came as no surprise that she was Teacher of the Year last year. She embodies that title perfectly and is completely deserving of it. We love her and support her and pray she can teach my next two children in the coming years at Johnson. Teachers are amazing. There are so many that have blessed my life and the life of my children, especially the one I am here to support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Thornton.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Angela Thornton, and our family has lived in this district for 12 years. We moved here out of state and chose this district specifically for the exemplary schools. I have two Dragon High School boys, a senior and a sophomore, and I'm here to provide my experience with the fourth grade teacher that was recently reprimanded by the school board. My sophomore son was one of her first classes that she taught here. This teacher stands out as one of the very best teachers we've ever had. She has the biggest heart. Our child started this year very unsure of himself and lacking confidence in many ways. She took the time to get to know him as a person and identify for herself the ways in which he best learns. And she then took it to a different level and helped him identify for himself how he best learns and how to continue to advocate for himself to remain, help that he remain successful in life. He started that year unsure of himself and not confident, and he left that fourth grade year soaring and confident. I hope that you as a board and she as a teacher never, ever underestimates the profound impact that she has had on the life of my child. She always had an open door for communication and made herself available to discuss concerns, but also celebrate victories. After winning her well-deserved Teacher of the Year award, my son and his buddies couldn't wait to go back to their old elementary school to congratulate her in person. She wasn't just a teacher in passing. She left a lasting impression on them that they will never, ever forget. I can't begin to fully convey to you how far above and beyond she goes to connect to our kids and educate them to their fullest while teaching them compassion and respect for everyone they meet. She never, ever expects a thing in return or has any other agenda other than to help them all succeed. I would ask the board to truly take all of this into consideration and all of the positive support from everything that you are hearing here today and reconsider the reprimand against her. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mason Thornton.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mason Thornton. I'm a sophomore here at Carroll High School, and I had a phenomenal fourth grade teacher at Johnson Elementary who recently received a reprimand. And when I heard about all this, I felt led to speak out about this and my experience with her as my teacher. I was really shy in fourth grade, and when she noticed this, she took me aside early in the year and told me I was important. And I'll be honest with you, I don't really remember having a teacher that, like, back then that did that with me. And so that spoke volumes to me. And that, and she said like I had important things to say that people needed to hear, and she helped me find my voice that year. And I will never forget how much she believed in me. And I remember how much she loved all of us, like even the kids that were hard, she loved them all the same. And one day she was reading this, like, it was the last day of school. She was reading this, the Doctor Schuster book, All the Places You'll Go. And about two, three pages in, she broke down in tears. I thought something was wrong, but she stopped and told us why, so I choked her up. And it was because she believed in each one of us and knew, like, of our, we all come that year and all we would go on to do in life. And anyone that had her as a teacher knows that she loves all of her kids, pours her heart into helping us learn, all while teaching us to show kindness to everyone. I'm never going to forget my teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming. Our next speaker is Tara Edens.
Good evening. Good evening, board. Mike Fictionbaugh, NBC News. The issue at hand regarding our Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, I've gotten up here time and time again in front of this board and said over and over again that she has been the glue of our district. She held us together during COVID. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle you are on, she is a leader in our district and she is an advocate for all students, no matter where you come from. As to the issue with the teacher at Johnson Elementary, every, as someone stated earlier tonight, every single member of this board takes an oath to uphold and defend every single student in Carroll ISD. What so many here tonight forget is that one student was pulled out and bullied by not one, not two, but three teachers. The teacher was reprimanded for Texas Education Code 26.008. It was not about the content of the book that she brought home. The teacher and the other two teachers bullied her in the hallway, a 10-year-old child, for bringing home the material and telling her, "You cannot bring that material home to your parents." That is wrong. Many, many parents have emailed you, Dr. Ledbetter, and the board about the leadership at Johnson Elementary. This could have been avoided. There is a group of sorority teachers at Johnson Elementary in fourth grade. You can look at their social media this past week, they are flaunting it. She may be a great teacher to so many students, and that warms my heart as a former teacher, but what she did to that student in the hallway last spring is not okay. As to House Bill 3979, many here tonight want to construe the two. They are separate. House Bill 3979 removes CRT from curriculum. That passed this summer, for many of you who do not know. The first paraprofessional learning day was October 8th.
Ms. Edens, your time is up. You can email the balance of your comments to the board. Our next speaker is Bonnie Penegras.
Good evening.
Sorry, hold on, one sec. Start again. The mic was off.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay. As a community, our unifying message to NBC should be the following: Your opinion of our town is inconsequential. I don't have the answers on how we can even begin to go about unifying things, but talking to NBC is not going to get us there. Dr. Ledbetter, I believe you set the tone by agreeing to interview with them, and I think that was a serious mistake. I don't know what possible good we thought would come from interviewing with NBC. We didn't hire you to give these types of interviews. They are hell-bent on tearing down the town that you grew up in. Ms. Mills, I'm shocked that you're actually here tonight.
Point of order, please.
I'm sorry.
I said point of order, you're not allowed to use names.
You're an A.
Hold on, hold, stop. Hold on. Let me address my fellow trustee. Ms. Mills, they can use the names of trustees and Dr. Ledbetter. I've asked everyone to not use names of staff or teachers. Okay, we may continue.
Okay. So, considering your historically low attendance rate, I'm shocked to see you here. But I do believe that your rhetoric before that grievance vote was really irresponsible, and I think it caused a lot of division. Hannah Smith, Cam Bryan, Eric, I think that you stood up for that child, and I appreciate your vote. We all love and support our teachers, but when an employee blatantly violates the Texas Education Code, there are consequences to that, and I believe that that's what you enforced. You did exactly that, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Coburn.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Coburn. I'm a proud mother of two dragons, and I'd like to introduce one dragon tonight to you.
Hi, I'm Reese Coburn. I'm Reese Coburn, and if I had to say everything that my fourth grade teacher from Johnson Elementary helped me with, it would take me three weeks if I talked really fast. But the point I wanted to say, tell here was my fourth grade teacher taught me a lot of kind things. You can ask all the other students she has taught, and was she kind? And they would say yes. She would always wait by the door to greet me, and I would see her, and it would make me smile. She would never yell or even talk very loud. She's a sweet and thoughtful person. If you were to meet my fourth grade teacher, the first thing you would think is, wow. After, you would go home and be like, man, she's nice and very respectful, which is 100% the truth. My fourth grade teacher, a teacher who taught me kindness, loyalty, and respect, has also taught me how to treat others how I would want to be treated, and I have done that since. All of those things came from her entire heart, to when she taught us that. I always think of that when I'm feeling down. I just wanted to say to the people who haven't, like, met her fully and don't know her, that she was a great teacher and that she would do anything to make her feel, students feel comfortable. I would recommend you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh King.
I'm obviously not Josh King. I'm his wife, but he had to take my 10-year-old son to baseball, so I will be speaking at his place. We are not a politically public-driven family. As a family, we always try to listen to all sides of anything going on, especially as of late in our community, but we felt an obligation to speak in support of the teacher that was recently reprimanded and express our complete support for her and her character. She has provided nothing short of a completely positive and nurturing learning environment for our son and has been nothing more than a positive presence in his life. She not only supports our kids within the walls of the school, but takes interest in them outside of the classroom by supporting their extracurricular events and special interests off the clock. She is a teacher who found her passion in life, and that is to teach She is a teacher who found her passion in life, and that is to teach and mold our children to become the citizens that this city and our country needs. While she has just won, there are many others in this district just like her: passionate, talented, caring, and driven. They are special to our family, and we felt that it was important to share that with the board. Our fear as a family of CISD is that we are facing the reality of losing many of our greatest assets in these truly instrumental teachers because they are scared, they feel unsupported, and they are tired of the ever-changing rules imposed on them. They are professionals, and yet they are not able to do their job that they have been trained to do. Not only will they leave our district, but they will leave teaching altogether due to the lack of support from the board and the district, and all of our kids will be the ones that suffer because of it. We ask that you reconsider the reprimand of this teacher. Please support our kids, support our teachers, serve this community. To our community, step back and just be kind to one another. Walk in a different pair of shoes once in a while, or at the very least, stop arguing for one second and listen to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Killian.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening. I think we can all recall those educators that made a big influence in our life, and I would say that that person was the 4th grade Johnson teacher for my daughter. My daughter's dyslexic, and she struggles with reading and writing. And when children have difficulty with reading and writing, they tend to not want to do it. This teacher understood that, worked with her, connected with her, and understood what she would like to read, worked with her and to make sure that she was able to improve her writing, gave her the tools to do so. In fact, she also told my child that she was gifted in writing. If you can understand the phenomenal impact that has on a child who has that difficulty, it makes a huge impact. At the end of the school year, my child was not only coming home excited to read certain books that this teacher provided to her, she also came home and said, "What if I became a writer, Mom? Wouldn't that be funny?" I just want you to also know that the impact that this teacher had, she doesn't stop when they leave the classroom. At the very beginning of the year, she sent an email to my child to encourage her on the start of her new year and the start of this new school year. I hope this board will reconsider the reprimand that you did on this teacher. She's phenomenal, and we need to support these great educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juan Saldivar.
Good evening.
How are y'all doing? I got a question for you. So we've been told for the last several weeks that we need to follow the experts on everything, follow the experts on COVID, follow the experts on education, but it seems to me that blind obedience to credentials and licenses is not the way to go. It's unfortunate that the word choice that was used in the most recent reporting came from educational experts, it came from the administration. So why aren't the people that are advocating for following the experts having to answer for that? That's what I'd like to know. Expert advice is relevant and good when it's in context, but I think giving the administrator the benefit of the doubt is the right answer. I think it's been said before, we need an investigation, we need to know exactly what happened, especially in light of the recording that was cut off, just like I think the teacher got the benefit of the doubt. A letter of reprimand is not the end of the world for upholding a standard and protecting the interests of a child. But there's another thing here that I want to talk about, and that is the book at the center of the controversy. So this book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, or this book is anti-racist, is actually all about race essentialism. This book tells children to inventory their personal physical characteristics, starting with their gender and sexuality, their skin color, their race, and it tells them that they have to categorize themselves either as part of the dominant privileged culture or the subordinate marginalized culture. And it lays out very clearly what the privileged culture is. It's you, Dr. Ledbetter, it's you, Eric Lannan, it's you, Cam Bryan, because you happen to be white, male, cisgender. So that stuff is crazy. I think we need opposing views on that. I'm not advocating banning a book. I advocate following the law, which says if you're going to put that out there, you need to advocate the opposing view, which would be human essentialism. It's what Martin Luther King said. It's the protesters in Memphis holding up signs saying, "I am a man." Not, "I am black, I am a man. Treat me like a person." That's what we need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marissa Mahin. Is Marissa outside? Marissa Mahin?
I think she left.
Oh, she left, okay. Our next speaker then is Leo DeCalvo. Good evening.
The reprimand was not about the book. You said it at the beginning. Speakers keep coming up here and saying, "I can't believe how ill-informed they are. It's not about the book. It's about what the teacher did after the fact." She admitted to it. She violated TEA code and admitted to it. She bullied a child. Why is there no reprimand for that? Why are people asking to have that reprimand taken back? I thought all these people in this room were all about the student first and all about no more bullying in the school, but it's okay for a teacher to bully a student? They're okay with this. This is unbelievable. I don't get it. And then Ms. Mills uses this issue to further divide and put fear into this community. Was she out of order at the previous meeting commending on the issue of an executive session? Did she violate the quorum where there are undignified remarks directed at fellow trustees? Did she implicitly divulge the content of an executive session during her public comments? Did her words incite retaliation for the family? Nobody's talking about the family. They went through the process. They filed a grievance. They did what they had to do. The administration failed them. The board issued a reprimand. That's what needed to happen. I don't doubt the teacher's an amazing teacher. People have come up here and said that. She's an amazing teacher, wonderful. What she did was wrong, and she needed to be reprimanded for that. NBC's obsessive reporter, Mike Hixenbaugh, he's on a teacher witch hunt. He's trying to divide this community, and Ms. Mills helps him. The people who secretly recorded and gave him the recordings are trying to divide us. That's all this is about. NBC's not going to help us here. They're trying to hurt us.
I'd like to make a point of clarification that I do not speak to Mike. I can't, I can't.
This is not on the agenda. You're not supposed to.
You were telling a lie. I do not talk to Mike Hixenbaugh. I do not set up recordings. So that's a lie.
All right, our next speaker is Kathy DeCalvo.
Good evening.
Good evening. I actually think South Lake is a great place, and I hate the division that's going on. It's never-ending, and we're feeding the people who want to see us crumble, and part of that is the fault of this board. Despite that and the turmoil we're facing, Carroll ISD is an amazing school district. We are blessed with hundreds of wonderful teachers, great principals, and a good administration. Things do not correct themselves overnight. It takes time. We are in a much better place today than we were one year ago. Thank you, Dr. Ledbetter. There is a lot more work that has to be done, and if we don't come together as a community, we will drown. I want to thank Cam, Eric Lannan, and Hannah for having the courage to do what was right. It was not easy, but a teacher who many here say is wonderful, I do not know, but I do not doubt that she is, did something wrong. Let's not lose sight of that fact, that the 4th grade teacher may be amazing, but she made a mistake. Let's move on from this. Let's become what South Lake has always been, great. There are many wonderful people sitting in this room, and we fight with each other day and night. It's old. It has to end. We have to come together and make this the greatest town in the world again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Over the last nearly seven weeks, I've had the good fortune of speaking with so many fellow Dragon parents, both past and current, and community members, and even Dragons themselves. I've seen the best of South Lake, groups of caring neighbors who want to maintain the academic excellence we all expect by adequately preparing our children to leave the South Lake bubble. Meeting and speaking with these folks has been a bright spot through all this that I didn't expect. The other thing I didn't expect is that some of my fellow community members would spread outright lies about me, questioning my teaching experience, in particular my integrity in general. I mention these two desperate examples because it has reinforced what some in our community seem to be having a hard time understanding, that two things can be true at the same time. We can be a wonderful, rich community that also has room for improvement. To many, this doesn't seem in conflict at all, but others seem unable to accept that we are working to make CISD better because we care enough to want it to be better. Through my conversations with community members, I also hear echoed time and again, politics have no place in public schools or on a public school board. The fact that the school board trustee is a nonpartisan position is not happenstance, it is because public schools are for everyone, regardless of your religion, race, nationality, sexual orientation, and so on. As a public school, we can't choose who to protect, we must protect all students. So our community heads to the polls over the next two weeks. I ask that you look at the recent events in our cities and schools. The 3-2 vote by the school board to reprimand a teacher despite education professionals at both the school and district level believing otherwise, and perhaps even more importantly, the fact that two of the votes against the teacher and in favor of the family with the grievance were from our newest trustees who received campaign contributions from the family. Or look at the Reese's crisis related to the implementation of HB 3979, when teachers are afraid to have books. Books in their classrooms become some parents may decide a book goes against their morals and values. These events are related by one thing, their connection to politics, specifically a political action committee that has created division and angst in our community. Go to the polls and cast your vote against.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Our next speaker is Ina Dietrich. Is Ms. Dietrich, Mr. Miller, is Ms. Dietrich in the hallway? We'll move on to the, we'll see if we can locate her. If not, the next speaker is Jennifer Green-Godep.
Good evening.
Good evening. I originally shared this post on the Parent Advocates for South Lake Students Facebook page in May when House Bill 3979, also known as the Anti-CRT Bill, passed the Texas Senate. Many of you have fallen for the false narrative that the South Lake Families PAC and conservative media have been pushing. Critical race theory is a complex legal theory that explores how the law intersects with issues related to race. It's taught in law school, not K-12 schools, and wasn't included in CISD's CCAP. But this bill goes even beyond that, limiting discussions on racism and current events and discouraging civic engagement from students. Texas students should be taught the truth about history, including the ugly parts like the Trail of Tears, slavery, the internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II, white supremacy, and the Holocaust, and about contributions from women and people of color. History isn't always pretty, and ignoring the ugly parts or contributions from underrepresented people doesn't mean they never happened. As Winston Churchill said, "Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." Some things I feared as I wrote this have come to fruition. Books are being removed from classrooms. Teachers are closing their libraries. Teachers have been told to consider both sides of the Holocaust when we know there's only one right side. This all stems from this unnecessary bill and the fact that no one at the state or district level thought through its implementation. I feel for our teachers and administrators who signed up to teach and support our precious children but don't understand how to comply with this bill. Administrators who are the messengers and teachers who have expressed fear cannot be hung out to dry as scapegoats. Dr. Ledbetter, you are our superintendent, and you must lead here. And board trustees, Dr. Ledbetter and his staff have the educational background and teaching experience to lead here, and you have to trust them to do that. And lastly, shame on you who are more concerned with protecting the tradition than protecting and supporting our students and teachers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robyn Cornish.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm going to share with you about a book the district will likely not allow, Thug: The Hate You Give. A novel written by Angie Thomas looks at the overall theme of racial injustice, how it affects society, and how significant the problem is. It was even a movie. The author was inspired by the iconic rapper-poet Tupac. When she developed the title of her book, Tupac had thug life tattooed on his torso. Many thought it represented his gang lifestyle. During an interview, the brilliant lyricist explained the meaning: "Thug life, the hate you gave little infants," expletive, "everybody." He then explained, "What you feed us as seeds grows and blows up in your face." He was referencing racism, prilies brutality, injustices, and other injustices Black has endured. When I think of PAC, I think of The Hate You Give, thug. When I look at some of the school board members, I think of thug, the hate you give. That was the same hate that my children experienced and other childrens endured in this community. Dr. Ledbetter, like an Avenger, it's time for you to fortify your spine with vibranium from the motherland Wakanda. Stand up for these children and stand up for your teachers. To my queens, my queens Michelle and Sheri, who are the beacon of light, though the storm rages amongst you, hold on, stay strong. God's got you. So to the citizens of South Lake, if you are not about that thug life, vote for Stephanie
Our next speaker is Maris Richter.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I have lived in this school district since 1992. When my daughter was born, we built a house here because it was the cheapest place we could find in Grapevine to live. I took a leap of faith coming into this school district because I'm a Jew and my children are Jewish. And for the most part, it's been fine. My children had wonderful teachers at Johnson Elementary School. In fact, they had wonderful teachers who inspired my daughter to become a teacher. For full disclosure too, I should mention, I was a longtime reporter for the Dallas Morning News, and I worked in national and international media. But I am ashamed and I am disgusted by what's going on here. I cannot believe that you have an administrator who is an educated person, probably with a master's degree, if not a PhD, who could talk about, mention the Holocaust in the way she did and deny it. I grew up in Skokie, Illinois, a town maybe some of you have heard of in the past, where Nazis, neo-Nazis tried to come to our town because it was home to many, many Holocaust survivors. It was the ultimate insult then, and I continue to feel like it is now. I hope that you will consider not just a reprimand, but firing that administrator who spoke like that because she does know better and certainly should know better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Hibbs.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your service. I'd like to speak tonight on behalf of the 4th grade teacher that was reprimanded on October 4th. When my son, who is in 8th grade now, came home in 2nd grade and said that he knew what teacher he wanted in 4th grade because his big cousin had her, I knew we had a problem. So we waited and waited. Finally, we got that teacher, and I have to tell you, she was everything he hoped for and more. She has a way to relate to the kids on all levels. She's the quintessential elementary school teacher, so sweet and kind-hearted, not a mean bone in her body. Not only that, but she then challenges the kids at their individual level so they can work to their full potential. He's in 8th grader now, and he has been blessed with so many great teachers since then, but he will never forget the impact of his 4th grade teacher. Finally, I'd like to say that we appreciate all of the teachers. On behalf of my family, we appreciate all of the teachers and administrators in Carroll ISD, and we're with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Voe. Our next speaker is Sean Voe.
Good evening.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sean Voe. I'm 18 and currently a senior. Recently, I've been hearing a lot about racism and discrimination going on in South Lake. Issues like the removal of anti-racist books because it goes against our morals and our faiths. To that, I ask, what are your morals and your faith if it's against being against racism? What do you stand for if you don't believe being anti-racist? It's definitely not for me. It's definitely not for people of color and students of color. There's also been issues with an administrator, rather educators, saying we should teach the opposing side in concern to the Holocaust and the millions of Jewish people who lost their lives. What side is there? What other side do you wish to teach if that other side disallowed these people their lives? A man earlier liked to quote Martin Luther King, saying that he would have advocated for teaching the opposing side. Who would advocate for equality and also to teach an opposing side that took lives away from people? On top of that, there have been many students who wish to speak against these issues and have spoken up, but time and time again, they have been ignored. There stands a man whose voice is put above theirs, a man who believes you should not listen to the students and they should not be attending these meetings. It's disgusting that you put their voice above students who would go to these schools and walk these halls and sit in these classes. It is our choice to learn what we wish, and it's our choice to fight what we wish for. Don't be rude.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samantha Zelling.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Samantha Zelling, a current Jewish student. I know a candidate for school board, and even a lady in the hallway said that student voices do not matter, but as a minority voice, I urge the board to listen. The decision that an opposing view of the Holocaust should be taught is appalling and a form of modern-day antisemitism. Members of my family were persecuted, and six million of my people were ethnically cleansed in the Holocaust. The opposing view is the Nazi view. By encouraging this view, you are teaching students that the Nazis were not completely in the wrong. The Nazis were completely in the wrong. Does Carroll believe that the Nazis who killed my family in concentration camps may be at a point that they deserve to die just for being Jewish? It feels like y'all do by encouraging the opposing view perspective of a genocide. This specific interpretation of House Bill 3979 is a bunch of neo-Nazi crock. The community wants to know if the director of curriculum will be held accountable for her outrageous guidance on this matter. In the meantime, honor the victims of the Holocaust instead of promoting discussions of why they deserve to die. Don't be schmendricks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kendra Cheek. Oh, she's not here. Oh, right here. What's that? I'm sorry.
She had to go take her kids.
Oh, okay. You're speaking on her behalf, sure. And what's your name?
Christina.
Christina.
I am a teacher in C I S D to our South Lake community and our board. I have wanted to be a teacher since I was a little girl. Teaching is what I know I have been called to do. I love your kids, and they are my why. My goal as their teacher is to make sure I provide an environment that allows them to learn, grow, and have fun daily, to provide a space where all students feel safe, and I wish some of you made me feel safe in return. Unfortunately, some members of this community and board have left me feeling everything but that. After the meeting on October 4th, I, as a teacher, felt betrayed, unsupported, and quite scared by those members, scared for myself, for my fellow teachers, and for our kids, for our students. I love your children, and I want to continue being the best teacher I can for them. Please help rebuild my trust in South Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Lumberman. She left, okay. The next is Sunitra Chowdhury. Nope.
Good evening.
Okay, first and foremost, South Lake residents value our wonderful teachers. They are what makes South Lake special, and we encourage the school board to push through the rays for them. Additionally, I support the school administrator who works tirelessly, tirelessly for this district. While I don't agree with her example, we cannot use one quote to define an individual. Like the others, it's important to emphasize that the issue with the one teacher has nothing to do with book banning. Conservatives are wholly opposed to censorship. We do not want to see cancel culture. We need to teach the good, the bad, and the ugly. The administration needs to clearly explain that the opposing view has to do with presenting alternative points of view to ideology, not actual history. The issue was that the teacher violated the Texas Code 26 dot 008, which is a parent's right to full information concerning the student. We don't want any school employee, no matter how wonderful they are, to tell a child to withhold information from their parents. The only way we can advocate for our parents, or, sorry, for our children, is if we know what is going on. If a school employee is allowed to tell a child that they cannot share with their parent what is going on, how can we advocate for them? I'm begging the administration to clarify this publicly, what actually, why she got her reprimand. Also, I agree special interests invading our city is a problem. It started with B L M, then S A R C, then moved Terrence Forward, a Democratic Political Action Committee, then D A T S, a politically-left organization that a school board candidate has served as a spokesperson for on this podium over 15 times. Our teachers are caught in the middle and have begged us to defeat C cap. Hundreds of teachers are caught in the crossfires, and it's terrible. And the truth is, we all love our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our final speaker tonight is Christine Johnson. She left, okay. Who just, I don't, oh, are you her spouse? Well, I mean. Well, I let the spouse, I mean, well, okay, I did not let the spouse be, I'm sorry. I don't know what the, I don't think I can do that if there's no, if you weren't here with that person. Okay, let's, Ms. Johnson has left. I don't know if you came here, you're Mr. Shirley? Yes. If you came here and you were already too late to sign up for public comments, but that's all I, I mean, we're going to close the public comments at this time.
Okay, so with, so I wanted to say, I wanted to thank the audience and our guests tonight for following our board protocols for the most part, being respectful by not mentioning staff and teachers' names through your public comments, so I appreciate that, and really kind of sticking with your two-minute time limit. It helps us keep a boardroom that is safe and welcoming, and everyone is able to express their opinions and provide feedback to the board.